Pardons à la flèche de l'Amérique des États-Unis et à la République pour laquelle il y a une nation qui garde la liberté individuelle et justice pour tous.
So, a couple of quick things. Mr. Kenson gave you a call. I did forward that note on to an attorney. And as soon as I get logged in here, I'll read his response. I think it's actually kind of out of our hands. I'll read you this response. I'm not saying we won't try to help him, but my initial thought is like, obviously, we and the board are gonna have to defer to-
De no hay.
You know, when he's advising-
Can you see me now?
But if you could maybe just give us a quick review of what your, you know, your thought is here, and then I'll find you know from my attorney.
Well, everything that happened on the demolition of the old house was done wrong. First of all, Jackson Equipment was fine for not doing asbestos abatement. I would've had, I came to them to get the permits to take the house down. I guess I'd take Melanie on. The very next day, volunteer firemen called 911 on the old house. First of all, why would anybody do that? Second of all, they deal with you people all the time. They will, somebody, if there was a problem they thought structural wise, they're the firemen. They would've gone to the building inspector, not called 911. I had insurance money to take the house down. But for some reason, she did it that way. Because they took it out of the town's hands because it's a state road. That way, it didn't look like the town was coming down against me. Bob Frost, they were scheduled to do an asbestos abatement on Monday, but I had the house down on Tuesday. They rushed the deal in two days to knock the house down illegally because they've never had asbestos abatement, there were no air monitors, nothing, and left it there. All they did by doing that was take it from a $25,000 project to over $100,000 because once the property is knocked in, it's assumed to be eminence. I've been, I was in touch with Tom Russo, who's the lead inspector for the state of New York, that told me it was illegal to leave it there. It shouldn't have been left. But at that point, I had to deal with trying to get it cleaned up. I had told them that they did that, the house did not have to come down within two days. Bob Frost was my contractor, it could've been Cable. I could've parked a tractor trailer in front of it for the weekend until Monday, when ASI would've been there to do the testing. He would've had it down on Tuesday. If they had done it legitimately, they couldn't have done it as fast as I could've because unless they could get somebody there to do an asbestos abatement within two to three days, which you can't do on a weekend. So, what ended up happening is, I told them if they did that, where they're gonna put me in a bankruptcy. I had lost my job, it was going to a divorce, just everything was wrong. But I had the money from the insurance company to take care of cleaning up, take, of demolishing the old house and doing it right. They sent me a bill, it was $3,000 for the demolition of Jackson Equipment. And then they had attorney's fees attached to it. I went through, started the bankruptcy proceedings. I guess the town held a special meeting behind closed doors, which I was never informed about, decided to make it taxes, property taxes. I've never owed, back owed property taxes because my taxes are escrow. So now I have a lien against me, which started out to be $3,000 with attorney's fees and your 15% penalty, which nobody charges 15% anymore. My bankruptcy was over eight months ago. All of a sudden, this judgment or lien pops up. And when the, now bankruptcy's federal. But I guess because you people decided to call it property taxes, now I have a lien against my house. It would've been taken care of in the bankruptcy because it was listed under the bankruptcy, which is federal. When she called the Schenectady County, they told her it was like $6,000. Now, I called the town clerk because I was gonna try to make arrangements and pay it off. I just wanted, try to get my credit cleaned up, whatever. She took a couple of days to get back to me and because of these interest fees and stuff like that, it's like $8,900. I'm a working stiff. First of all, it shouldn't have been handled. It is, not only that, after this happened, I worked for Rick Peterson, who's Melanie's cousin. Her and her family went to Rick and threatened to do it. With me working there, they weren't gonna bring their cars anymore. So Rick let me go. What did I ever do to you people? Or it hurt. It should never have happened the way it happened. Because first of all, it was done illegally. It shouldn't have been left there. I want to get this taken care of, pay the fees for Jackson and reasonable attorney's fees and stuff. But with these interest rates, 15%, something like that. Thing is, it's a bankruptcy court. She can make it a two-year term, pay a couple hundred dollars, and be taken care of. I'd like to get it taken care of now. But we can come to some kind of conclusion and try to make it reasonable. You know, it's like what, the original fees over $3,000 are almost $9,000 because of attorney's fees, town attorney's fees, and interest rates. Like I said, I'm a working stiff. I don't have that kind of money. And that's why I'm here, to see if there's anything that I could do with it.
So, what the, kind of the issue is now is, you know, the town board at the time, you know, approved the attorney's fees as, this court and our attorney now, a different, you know, a different attorney, a different board than I think on, uh-
I was on-
I'll turn it over to you in a second. And so, we approved the, the time, whatever attorney fees, you know, were expended at the time is reasonable. And, you know, pretty much like anything that's out of our pocket, then we, you know, we want restitution. But normal process is, at least especially for Schenectady County, we turn over to the county our debt every year. So we, during the tax season, we take taxes as part of normal process and normal business. And then at some point, usually about April 15th or so, you know, we settle up with the county. So the county, we turn the money over, we collected, we turn to the county. But at some point, the county says, you know, "Prince Town, you owe this much money." And during the tax season, we take it and we hand it to them, say, "This is how much we collected." And during that process, the county actually comes back and makes us whole. So whatever they owe us, they owe us, and now the county assumes the debt. So where I'm going here is that, right now, it's not in our town's hands anymore. It's in the county's hands because the county's already paid us. The debt is being assumed by the county. Have you contacted the county attorneys?
No. Problem is, it's not property taxes.
I know it's not-
It's the demolition fees and labor fees because you changed the term of it to taxes. You call that right? You know, I served this country. I work hard. This is not right. Under a federal bankruptcy, Jackson should've been taken care of and any of the town attorney's fees. Because you changed the terminology, which I was never even told about it.
Well, be careful. I'm gonna say "we" because it wasn't me, you know. You know, Bob can speak to it because he's the only person on the board at the time, but... You're right, it's not property tax, but it's, it's money owed to town.
And the bankruptcy should've taken care of that.
I don't know. You know, I thought our attorney would be here tonight, you know. Apparently, I forgot to notify everybody, but we're missing a councilman too. All I can do is, Mr. Kenson, is try to set up a call with you, the district attorney, the county, and our attorney, and see what we can go. I don't know what I can do. You know, that's all I can do because that's the only knowledge I have. I don't know, Bob, if you can add anything to, you know, the whole discussion, or?
Well, I was here when, you know, they had that meeting and we had a special meeting. And then, I'm the, I didn't know this was coming up, but I happened to be the one that was not for knocking the building down. And to the attorney and the supervisor then, it was basically, uh, they kind of really talked me into it per se for the reason that it was a safety issue as far as the town goes. And if we didn't do it, then we would be held liable. That's, that's what they heard it was. No, I understand, and I just want you to know that I happened to be the one that was not for, for that. Now, did you say the fees for tearing that building down from Jackson was only $3,000? Okay, and that has been paid or hasn't?
No, because Jackson and the, the town's fees were listed under the bankruptcy. But because I was never told that the town held a closed meeting and made it property taxes, it didn't show up and go through the bankruptcy. Because my taxes are escrow.
So, again, I think like Mike said, I'm the only one that happened to be on that board in the original-
Right, and the thing is, even though what they did is wrong because they would've never been able to knock it down legally without asbestos abatement, there were no air monitors there, nothing. But because of it, I'm having to deal with the financial part of it now. Even though what they did is wrong, and if she would've just let me go, it would've been down two days later and done legally.
Well, like Mike said, I think that at this point in time, I think that that's probably the best option we have is to see if we can't get, you know, a meeting together with the attorneys and see what they can work out with. I'm sure that I can speak for the board that would be more than happy, you know, to work with them and you to try to get things squared away and taken care of in whatever means or remedies are needed. But at this point in time, like Mike said, it is out of our hands and there's little or nothing we can do without, you know, going through the attorneys. So if, you know, if you could maybe be patient a little bit longer and work with us, we'll see if we can't do something, you know, along that line and see if we can't get things squared away.
I appreciate it because I mean, now, the only ones to make out on this are lawyers. I have no respect, I'll tell you, for lawyers. I've been through it enough with them and different things. I had one, I went through a divorce, not to get off the subject. Ended up showing up in court with the next one and then in court. I mean, it's, I just seen some very unethical. And it's wrong. Like I said, I'm a working man. I'm willing to try to take care of it. I wanna, I'm trying to get my credit cleaned up again, but now because of this, it'll stretch it out two years and-
Well, I can appreciate you wanting to get things settled up and your debts paid. And I'm sure we as a town board can appreciate that too. So we'll certainly see what we can do to work with you and with the attorneys and, you know, see what can be taken care of.
Thank you.
All right.
So I'll take the action, Bob. You go ahead and coordinate between Mike Quavis County and Mr. Kenson.
Okay.
Good deal.
Okay.
And I got your number, I think, yeah, I got your number, flag that, so. All right. Mr. Nick, do you hear?
You know, why I'm here, why did you give your approval of the, the sign, the no sign's out of the mirror for the tunnel, which everybody's been asking for, and I checked on it, $383 and some odd cents. And I wanted to know if the board's okay to buy it. And I'll put it up. It's one of those things. Then tomorrow, I'm meeting with Dane Mellon from Katie Company. We're gonna check all the roads for the, turn the joints. And then, Mike, you gotta get a hold of the county like you were saying. And see what they're gonna do about cleaning the pipes. I'm, uh, who to drive?
Culvers.
Culvers, yeah. It's about it.
Wasn't there a mirror, a mirror up there once?
Uh, about 30 years ago, 25, 30 years ago. I think it was glass then. I think I got shot out. This was stainless steel. It's two foot in diameter and they got it from one foot out up to five feet. So it takes about a week to get it, it was eventually bounced out somewhere. So Mel, after us. Once I, once I go- Yeah, I'll get it up there. I'll let you help me. Hopefully, you open a bucket on the back hole, you know?
I would, you know, strongly suggest that you, we do tie up the county. I mean, it's, it's not our property. Just for liability. I don't think Joe will actually have a problem. Because I actually met him two months and he was afraid of getting shot out because I think he's still on the idea it's all glass. But if you guys can't steal one, I don't think Joe will have a problem. But just to touch base, because it's actually a railroad property with some, and they have the whole-
Well, the pole's there with a light on it. That's the pole I was gonna use. They're gonna send brackets up with it. I don't know the type they are. If they don't have the right ones, we'll make them, you know, but... Uh, I think that'll be a nice thing. It'll be safe. It's dangerous, that all the way there, I agree. Cars are coming through it from doing through a door pretty fast. And they're just about, you can see around corner. Coming the other way. You got their nose right out. Cars come so much, they don't blow the horn. Thank you, you know?
All right. Town board approval for that, I see it's under 500.
Yeah, that's what I've been saying, you know?
Wow.
I mean, probably have to do the type of proof, but I don't think we need any bids or anything.
No, just trying to be open and transparent, that's all, you know?
Now, Mike, you said that we could have an account in Crenshaw, right?
Yep.
So I just have to charge it to the town?
Yeah, just make sure, you know, when they ask him, just make sure to say, hey, you know, just double check what you got, our tax ID number. They should have it, should be-
Take it out, if you have a problem, it's under state contract.
Yeah, well-
Because under state contract, you only pay what the state will pay.
Right.
Only charge it with the state.
The actual price of this was over $400, $430 or something. And I told him, I said, "Come to Prince Town," and he dropped it down with me.
And, what time tomorrow?
10:30, we'll, we'll meet within 10.
All right. Cool. And I'll, while we're meeting here, I'll try to send Joe and Mike France a quick note on, um... Move it down.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I asked them, I asked, uh-
Can I tell them to give you a call and you can meet with them?
Pardon?
I'll tell Mike or Joe to give you a call.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'd like to let them know which ones gotta be cleaned. They keep cleaning the ones from the, the middle of the road down, which is unless the one's on top of the ones that are plugged, which they've never cleaned before. So if they get in touch with me, I'll show which one.
Good deal.
And as far as accounting with that mirror, uh, I've asked them plenty of times to put one up.
Yeah, I did, I asked Joe.
So, I don't think there's gonna be a problem with it.
Yeah, he was, the only reason he was hesitating because he kept saying it's all their glass and just getting shot out. But if it's stainless steel, that changes the whole picture altogether.
We can just go in and talk to both of them, say, "I don't see a side door there."
Good deal. All right.
I'm gonna go then, so I'll understand this. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, okay, guys, I'm nice to you. Shut your camera in front of passing light.
He only left once.
I got you, I got you.
Luke, you want to touch base on the, uh, the bit?
Yeah. The estimate's around and, uh-
We have a winner, huh?
The one was from the last meeting we had. That was the only ones who responded and, uh, we're not gonna wait, uh, till the next meeting. We're gonna work tonight. I don't know if we can do that tonight. You know, it has to be a public meeting, uh, in public forum. I mean, this is, uh, just what we're supposed to do for a rebuild. I mean, we can do whatever we think we can, but... What we're supposed to do is, uh-
How fast?
I got them all here. So I got all the estimates here.
But these guys are pretty reactive, I mean?
No, they said they'd all have it done by November 15th, every one of them. It's not a problem getting it done.
November, if we, they asked me to get it done by October, if November starts getting, you know, and we're like-
I just put that on there as, uh, as, uh, the patch of, uh, the November, you know, I just put that-
It's, I tell you, it's up to the board. The board, if you want to wait, it's fine. And we can do it tonight, or?
You know, that's, uh, I'm signing.
The total's up to you. We can do it tonight if you think we can do it without, uh, without a public, you know, without a regular meeting. Doug?
Well, I can say, "Do it."
Mr. Bob?
I don't have a problem. Just something that needs to be done.
Yes, that's what I got, I mean.
So we don't have a problem with doing it tonight or waiting?
No, I don't have a problem if we, you know, pull it tonight. You know, it's something that needs to be done, so.
That was from, uh, that was the estimate from, I'm just gonna get that back. I didn't make all the copies for, uh, for, uh, the, I was at, we've got ten of these. Eight years. So, and then pieces, the, uh, the all for the same. They all said they would have it done by the second week of November, still November 15th. And his is, the lowest bid was $8,500, highest bid was $9,700. All of them do the same thing. As a matter of fact, I took the scope of work from one of them, handed it all, wrote it up, re-did it, and handed it to all three of them again. And they all rebid it the same way, so. And, uh, American came in with the lowest bid.
Okay.
And they came in with $8,500. Apple was $9,700. March Roofing didn't want to rebid it. They backed out of it. And I had one other bid that I was waiting for and they didn't want to bother with it. So we've got the three.
Well, we sent it out and they no-bid it, or refused to, you know, well, I guess it basically a no-bid activity.
Sent them out to nine roofing contractors. We, uh, I suppose the problem is, a lot of, a lot of these contractors don't like dealing with municipalities for obvious reasons. You know, they, for whatever, they, they know they're gonna get paid, but, uh, you know, I don't think they, they like to bother with it, but that's my personal opinion on it.
I know a lot of them are busy, could've a ice storm or a house storm, like, but anyway.
Okay, um, so if you want to wait, I can contact more people if you'd like. Uh, wait another two weeks until the regular meeting or award at time.
Bob is a go, Doug's a go?
I'm fine with it then.
All right. And your, so the recommendation's American?
Yeah, that's, we gotta go by the lowest bid and they're, and he's that much cheaper from $9,200 to $87, and they're gonna do the same job. What are we gonna say?
Same price, isn't it?
Not 500, $9,200. I said 700, I put what?
Well, just to be clear, it's, it's not an absolute, but you probably have to ask some pretty good reasons why not to take the highest and the lowest bidder. And if they're qualified and certified, they make the scope.
Well, they both have, uh, all three of them have excellent reputations. I know Doug has, has dealt with that through his other contract when he was working for whoever. They've done, like, done with Quay, they've used American, they've used Apple, and they've used, uh, Shear. He said they're all reputable. Am I right? I mean, I mean, Nick said the same thing over here, he's in this business, so. They all guarantee their work. They've all been around 25 years or so. They don't stay in business that long. So, having some kind of a, uh, good reputation.
So you're good?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. So I'll write the resolution, but I'll read it out. I don't know if we need to tweak it, but, um, just so we can get them, if they're getting started a little earlier, this is why it's still pretty warm out. Um, so I have a motion to award the state police, uh-
This is for the flat roof one now?
Yep. Yeah, we're gonna do the two pieces?
Yes.
Yeah.
The other one, next year, if we can, uh, if, um...
Yeah, we want to, excuse us, we've got a lot of work to do.
Worried about the next year.
All right. Do I have a motion at the town board, the town, Prince Town approves Supervisor Joyce after consultation with Council Mike Quavis to review, approve, and sign a contract with American Construction Services to reroute the flat roof of the New York State lease barracks for a amount not to exceed $8,700?
$8,500.
It is, but-
Oh, okay, so we need to-
The plywood, the plywood.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. They said if you have to replace the plywood. He doesn't think we're gonna have to do that because he was up there looking at it. But if you want to say $87, that's fine.
So do I have a motion?
So-
Second?
I'll second.
Doug?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Mike says yes. Motion passed. Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. Okay. So I copied you guys about the, um, from the last meeting, special meeting, um, regarding the other chapter. Um, so it's submitted to the boards. I'll send a note out, ask them to have the recommendations or comments or whatever it is, um, back for the September meeting. 137, so, uh, we'll wait for, uh, wait for recommendations or follow the comments. All right, so tonight, we want to start on chapter 160, subdivision. So same thing, anyhow, we'll go through it. We'll read each and every, uh, chapter, or I'm sorry, section. Chapter 200, is that correct? We'll do subdivision first. Zone is the big one, sorry. We have two left, subdivision and zone. Okay. So I'm not gonna go through the first one. You can see that they're re-titling, you know, some of the chapters and sections. Again, this copy is, it's in the main section.
We got it.
Well, this has been reformatted. But it's the same one, it's in here. Is that a re-formatted, or is it not the same one? That's the one we're doing. Well, it's been, it's just been re-formatted, but that's it. Again, just like we did, uh, all the others, so. So I'm not gonna go through the sections here. Really, it's just breaking it out by section, right? 60, 160 dash 1 is the purpose, 160 dash 2 is the terms of five. Article 3, 160 dash 3, approval required, et cetera. So if that case, I'll just start and, um, I'll read them aloud. And then, as we did on the other, um, to get feedback from, from the board. All right, section 160 dash 1, purpose, article 1, declaration of policy. By authority of the resolution of the town board of the- By authority of the resolution of the town board of the town of Prince Town pursuant to the provisions of article sixteen of the town law of the state of New York, the planning board of the town of Prince Town is authorized and empowered to approve plots, or the plaques, Pat?
Plaque.
Plaque, all right. Showing lots, blocks, or sighted with or without streets or highways to approve the development of entirely or partially undeveloped flats already filed in the clerk, in the office of the clerk of the county, and to approve preliminary plaques within that part of the town of Prince Town outside the limits of any incorporated city or village. It is declared to be the policy of the planning board to consider land subdivision plaques as part of the plan, as part of a plan for the orderly, efficient, and economical development of the town. This means, among other things, that land to be subdivided shall be of such character that it can be used safely for building purposes without danger to health, or peril from fire, flood, or other menace. That proper provision shall be made for drainage, water supply, sewerage, and other needed improvements. That all proposed lots shall be laid out, shall be laid out and of such size as to be in harmony with the development plan of the neighboring properties. That the proposed streets shall compose a convenient system conforming to the official map, if such exists, and shall be properly related to the proposals shown on the comprehensive plan, and shall be of such width, grade, and location as to accommodate the prospective traffic to facilitate fire protection and to provide access of firefighting equipment to buildings. And that proper provision shall be made for open spaces for parks and playgrounds. It is further recognized that the open space is one of the town's great assets, and the maintenance of this character shall bear utmost consideration. In order that land subdivisions may be made in accordance with this policy, these regulations shall be known as, and which may be cited as the town of Prince Town Land Subdivision Regulations, have been adopted by the planning board on August twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-seven, and approved by the town board on September ninth, nineteen ninety-seven. All right.
Yeah, another question in regards to, um, and when we're talking about parks and open spaces, is that like in a development, the developer has to, or the landowner has to allow so much property for parks and open space, is that what that's saying?
So, this is the existing law.
Yeah, I was just curious what that actually was meaning, I mean. It doesn't say how much space, and it doesn't say what portion of the development has to be open, left for open space and parks. So, I guess that's just something I would. Ask for clarification, maybe.
All right. So, Bob, your question is, you wish clarification?
On what percentage of the development needs to be for open space and parks?
All right. Bob, wishes clarification on how much space needs to be left for open space and parks? Good?
Fine.
All right. Doug?
Yeah?
I'm fine with that. I'm for that.
No, I'm fine with that, I just said, uh, it might even be my question.
All right, so, okay, I'll make a little bow. Okay. We're good?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Article two, definitions, one sixty dash two, terms defined. For the purpose of these regulations, certain words and terms used herein are defined as follows. Bridge, a structure carrying a street, driveway, or pedestrian walkway over a decred-
Question missed applicant.
What?
Applicant is first, is in yellow? I don't have that, Joe.
I don't either.
Which one you got?
It's the new stuff I got, here's the old one.
Well, let's look at the old one, I guess.
Mike, this brings up a question, because, um, we've been through this already in the planning board, and we cleaned up a lot of this stuff, and it doesn't sound like you have the most recent issue.
Well.
Because applicant is referred to in the document, but it was never defined anywhere, so we added applicant as definition. Um, and there's a number of things like that, that we caught and already cleaned up. Um, and it sounds like you put an older version, because I was just looking at a lot of the stuff that we, you know, it's just small stuff, but a lot of stuff we kind of fixed, and I bet you don't have it.
So, actually, I'm honest, I do have it.
Okay, maybe you do have it, so.
So, it might be, yeah. Look at that one, actually, one you had.
Yeah, I just looked, I got two hundred and one eighty.
Two hundred and fifty-eight? He's in the, uh, second, he's running fire, boy.
Yeah, I don't have it.
It's the fire one, I got it.
Do you remember, do you remember today? I think I have one that's right up, but I don't have. Yeah. Cause I have my hand in one, you know, where we made those, and I mean.
One sixty, yeah.
And I don't know that I ever got the cleaned up one, but I think she did it. But it, it sounds like you do have the cleaned up, the one. Well, I just, like I say, I have where we end stuff, and then Joe's saying, like, as if he has it, so, I'm like, what? What happened to the one?
All right, so we got, we got three to four people have it.
Okay. I thought it was down there.
Sure it's not down there, I got the same clip.
No, I didn't see it. Maybe my eyes aren't there. I got some of them in my, I hit the one sixty. I got one on one sixty.
I had it in here.
Yeah, turn it over, yeah, see if it's done yet.
Okay, I got it, Mike, I got it. You got six, and then five on the way.
I got mine now.
Yeah, this is, uh, I think he, he probably did this stuff for.
In anticipation.
Okay. She just said. Well, we handed them to the, to the planning board, they made the recommendations, but nothing's been changed. We can undo it, or whatever you do.
All right.
I'll just move down there.
Yeah. You got yours, Bob?
No.
You can share mine, I'll make the notes on it. All right, so, any questions still stands for those on this?
Bob, it was under the ethics, you got that?
I don't have it here, I only have it at home, but it's all in here, and.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we all have it, you take the same clip.
There wasn't any micros.
No clip. All right.
Go ahead, we can, I'll listen.
Um, all right, so, article two, definitions. Uh, one sixty dash two, terms defined, for the purpose of these regulations, certain words and terms used here, herein are defined as follows. Applicant, any person, firm, corporation, partnership, or association who shall lay out any subdivision or part, thereof, as defined herein, either for himself or others. Bridge, a structure carrying a street, driveway, or pedestrian walkway over a depression, obstacle, or stream. Clerk of the planning board, that person who shall be designated to perform the duties of the clerk of the planning board for the purposes of these regulations. The town planner shall perform the duties of the clerk of the planning board unless a clerk is specifically appointed by the town board. We are suggesting we strike out, the secretary of the planning board shall perform the duties of the clerk of the planning board unless a clerk is specifically appointed by the town board. So, let's pause right there. Which, which to strike out, Mr. Sanders, and take that out for the town planner, as, as a sec, instead of secretary?
No, we don't have a town player.
Yes, we do, I should've right here.
Laura.
Right, well, assuming we're gonna point him out.
We'll table that.
I don't know. Doug, you, you okay with this, this first, uh?
Yeah, I don't have any problems.
Okay. Luke? Bob? To the slide? Yes. All right, comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan prepared by the planning board pursuant to section two seventy-two dash A of the town law, which indicates the general locations recommended for various functional classes of public works, places, and structures, and for the general physical development of the town, includes any unit or part of such plan separately prepared, and any adment, amendment to such plan or parts therein. Constructed improvement. Means an improvement identified by the planning board that must be constructed before final plat, approval of a subdivision in order to assure that the lots in such subdivision may be safely used without danger to health, peril from flood, fire, or other menace, and further to assure that the development of such lots will not have a detrimental impact to surrounding properties. Constructed improvements must be designed by a licensed professional engineer, and following construction, the design engineer must attest that the improvement was constructed in accordance with the approved design before final approval may be granted. Such constructed improvements shall be included, but not limited to, section A, a new street or improvement to, or extension of an existing street, or.
All this is strictly in a development, right?
Subdivision.
That's what we're talking about.
Yep. B, a bridge, a bridge, a bridge, sometimes known as, which is necessary for access to the subdivision or a proposed lot, or C, for residential lots and onsite water supply and/or storage system when inadequate data is available to determine the availability of groundwater in the vicinity of the subdivision, or when such information exists and indicates widespread evidence of wells with no yield or low yield such vicinity. Or D, for residential lots and onsite sewer disposal system when the planning board determines that conditions exist that warrant construction of such a system in advance of a building permit issuance, or E, an improvement other than those specific herein, specified herein, which the town engineer has identified, which would require the design by a professional engineer. So, comprehensive plan, constructed improvement, and then it's A, B, C, D, and E.
And this is just for all new stuff, right?
Subdivision, stuff for any subdivision.
New stuff, though.
Well, if you wanted to subdivide your land, that'd be good. Does this mean that, uh, if we redo the comprehensive plan, that we, we still have a, a point of committee to do this, or the planning board does it? That's what that says here.
Yeah, I'm thinking my, my answer. I'm trying to.
What's your question?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure it.
Well, it says comprehensive plan prepared by the planning board. So, we appointed, the town, I didn't at the time, but the town appointed a, uh, committee for the comprehensive plan. It says, planning board.
Pursuant to section two seventy-two A.
Pat, is that referring to the plans for the subdivision, or the, the town's?
No, section two seventy-two A of the town law provides for the planning board to, to prepare the comprehensive plan. The town board has the option to appoint a committee to do it, in which case, it is then reviewed by the planning board, and they either give it their, a saying or not. So, technically, right now, our comprehensive plan has not been prepared by the planning board, so we just wanna just put in something that says prepared either by the planning board or a committee appointed by the town board, just so it covers it.
Clear.
Yes, that's.
Cause you can do either one.
I can pick one, so. Fair with the one, Mike, and we'll read it back. All right, let me read it back to you, so we got it right, hopefully. Luke, add sentence slash note that town board may appoint a separate committee to advise on comp plan. All right, the constructive improvement, uh, paragraph?
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Luke?
And under C, residential lots, does that mean that if they have a, they don't have any water and they had a storage for water, a building permit would be issued anyway?
No, with you, in the old days, it used to be you had to have like three gallons per minute, like usually for the bank.
Usually it was more than that for a bank.
Yeah, five gallons a minute. Nowadays, and that was often for a mortgage, but what, when we look at it, we wanted to have obviously some water, we want to have water so you can have a house there. But even with wells of low capacity now, you can build storage systems so that they, you know, they can like sort of refill overnight when nobody's using them, and you have a tank and, you know.
That's what they did in that movie, right?
Yeah, so it's a way of kind of getting around a low, low-yield well. But we don't ask for evidence of a well except for a major subdivision. When we have a major, I think they have to, they have to actually drill a well, like one well for every five lots or something, to show that they have some water there. For a minor subdivision, it's basically, you take your chance, you know, you go in for your building permit, and if you can't show you have water, at that point...
Well, basically, it's up to the bank if they have a mortgage.
Well, yeah, if they have a mortgage. I don't even know if the banks require it anymore. I'm not sure they...
Well, they won't give you a mortgage without...
If you don't have water. Some of them are, you know, I know, I know when they were giving mortgages away left and right, they lifted a lot of the restrictions, but they made it back to that now, I'm not sure. But from our perspective, you know, we just want to make sure there's some water, at least for a major subdivision. For a minor, if you're just cutting out a lot, you don't have to show us anything. It's up to you. You want to have that lot, and then you want to build on it, you got to show water at some point to get a building permit, that's all.
Okay, so everything except for a sentence to add and a note on the separate committee for the comprehensive plan. All right. Culvert. A structure carrying a street, driveway, or pedestrian walkway over a water course, the latter of which does not meet the criteria for a stream as defined in these regulations. Dead-end street, a street or a portion of a street with only one vehicular traffic outlet. Driveway, a thoroughfare which provides vehicular access from a street to a parcel or to a structure on that parcel. Easement, authorization by a property owner for the, for the use by another and for a specified purpose of any designated part of this property. Engineer or licensed professional engineer, a person licensed as a professional engineer by the state of New York. Environment, environmental assessment form, the current long or short environmental assessment form used in conjunction with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Environmental impact statement, EIS, a statement in accordance with the requirements of New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Final plat, a plat containing all information or detail required by law and by these regulations to be presented to the planning board for approval. Is there add in this, underline decent? Lot, a platted parcel of land having frontage on an approved street and has sufficient dimensions to meet minimum zoning requirements, or a parcel of land meeting the requirements of town law, uh, town law section two eight three dash A. Kiko? Or do you want to pause? Doug? Lot-line adjustment, the exchange or transfer of land between adjoining lots. Major street, a street which serves or is designed to serve heavy flows of traffic and which is used primarily as a route for traffic between communities and/or heavy traffic generating areas. Major subdivision, any subdivision not classified as a minor subdivision, or any subdivision which involves a design and construction of an improvement, or a subdivision involving the use of reduced lot sizes as defined in Prince Town zoning law, or any subdivision which contains or is within one hundred feet of a New York State designated wetland, or flood plain, or subdivision which the planning board determines may have significant environmental impact. Minor street, a street intended to serve primarily as an access to abutting properties. Minor subdivision, a subdivision fronting on an existing street which does not involve an improvement, and which does not involve the use of reduced lot sizes as defined in the Prince Town zoning law, and which does not contain or lie within one hundred feet of a New York State designated wetland or flood plain, which consists of no more than four lots, including the parent parcel, and then they scratched out the, and which planning board determines will not result in significant impact to the environment, and which will not result in the creation of a fifth lot from the parent parcel over a three-year consecutive period. So pause there, so, uh, leave that, leave that, and take this out. So we went from culvert on page one sixty dash three to the top of one sixty-four.
The only thing, question I got to culvert. If it's a stream, you still got to culvert quite there, right? I don't understand it. Is it saying like you got to have something different if it's a stream?
Yeah, I think it does, that's what it says. It may still be.
You could look at Quackam bush road, there's all culvert pipes all the way down, Quackam bush road.
We got one.
And his prick runs there all the time.
I don't know if we, when they say a structure necessarily means a pipe, it could be, you know, mammoth ditch structure.
Yeah.
What's your question, though?
On, on the, the one there where it says culvert pipes, it's got in there a criteria for a stream, there's streams that run down the side of the road.
So a stream is defined, if you kept going, as a waterway indicated on the tax map or zoning map of the town of Princeton in effect at the time of application, or a permanent or intermittent stream is indicated by a blue line on a U.S. geological survey map. So a stream is basically an actual waterway that's flowing all the time, it's been designated on the GS map, as opposed to probably like a ditch or a...
In other words, if it dried up in the summertime and it's dry, then that's not a stream.
Yeah. Probably if you had something over a stream, it's probably more likely to be a bridge than a culvert.
Doug? You go with the, with the definition? Joe? Luke? Bob? So I'm going to say this is okay, culvert through minor subdivision. Official map. The map established by the town board...
Wait, where are you?
One sixty-four?
Oh.
One sixty, how about one sixty-four? Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Official map, the map established by the town board pursuant to section two seventy of the town, of the town law showing streets, highways, parks, and range, both existing and proposed. Parent parcel, a contiguous parcel of land from which a subdivision is proposed or has been created. Planning board or board, the planning board of the town of Princeton. Plat, a drawing or drawings showing the layout of a proposed subdivision. Preliminary plat, a plat marked preliminary plat as specified in section one sixty dash twenty-one of this chapter submitted to the planning board for approval prior to submission of the plat in final form and of sufficient detail to appraise the planning board of the layout of the proposed subdivision. Sewerage disposal area, a portion of a proposed lot indicated on the sketch plan or plat which is to be set aside for an on light, on lock sewer disposal system for such lot when a sewer is not available. They are recommending we delete site elevation form, a form provided by the planning board to be filled in by the applicant, which shall be provided such relevant information as to slope, soil type, percolation data, and other such information as the planning board or town engineer required. One of the suggestions they're suggesting. I'm just going to go ahead and read to the bottom, and then we'll... Sketch plan, a schedule of proposed subdivisions showing the information specified in section one sixty dash nineteen of this chapter to enable the, they scratched out the subdivider, applicant, to save time and expense in reaching general agreement with the planning board as to the form of the layout and objective of these regulations. Stream, a waterway indicated on the tax map or zoning map of the town of Princeton in effect at the time of the application, or a permanent or intermittent stream as indicated by a blue line on the U.S. geological survey map. Street, a street as defined in Prince Town Street and Highway Law. They're asking us to change subdivider, or delete subdivider. Any person, firm, corporation, partnership, or association who shall lay out any subdivision or part thereof as defined herein, either for himself or for others. Subdivision, the division of any parcel of land in two or more plots, blocks, or sites with or without streets or highways, and shall include re-subdivision of the parent parcel. Surveyor, surveyor, a person licensed as a land surveyor by the state of New York, town engineer, a duly designated engineer of the town of Princeton.
I think they're west state, clear?
Doug, and Luke? All right, so I'm going to say we're okay from official map, through town engineer, with the two deletions as indicated. Article three, procedure in filing subdivision applications, one sixty dash three, approval required. Whether any subdivision of land is proposed to be made and before any contract for the sale of, or any offer to sell any lots in such subdivision, or any part thereof is made, and before any permit for the erection of a structure is proposed, subdivision shall be granted. The scratched subdivider, the applicant for the subdivision, or a duly authorized agent shall apply the in writing for approval of such proposed... Subdivision in accordance with the following procedures. Section one sixty dash four, sketch plan, and they're scratching out environmental assessment and site elevation forms.
Evaluation.
Evaluation. Submission, A, submission of a sketch plan, and they're scratching out environmental assessment form. Any owner of land shall, prior to subdividing or re-subdividing, submit to the clerk of the planning board, scratching town planner, at least two weeks prior to the working, scratching out working session, regular meeting of the planning board, six copies, scratching eight, negative six, of a sketch plan of the proposed subdivision with attachments, which shall comply with the requirement of section one sixty dash nineteen, and, for scratching out, eight copies of each. The subdivision application for the purposes of classification and preliminary discussion. They're adding in, suggesting we add in, a digital copy of all submitted materials must be provided to the clerk of the planning board, including the sketch plan, any attachments, and subdivision application. The clerk of the planning board, scratching out town planner, shall promptly send out this information to, scratch seven, all members of the planning board to review for the next scratch out working section, regular meeting. Uh, I'll pause. Want me to keep going? Doug? Luke? B, one sixty-four, one sixty dash four, B, discussion of requirements and classification. One, scratch the sub, the applicant or his duly authorized representative shall attend the regular meeting of the planning board to discuss the requirements of these regulations, including such items as street improvements, soil conditions, drainage, sewage, stormwater management, water supply, fire protection, and similar aspects, as well as the availability of existing services and other pertinent information, including environmental impacts. One sixty-four, B, two, classification of the sketch plan is to be made at this time by the planning board as to whether is a lot-line adjustment, minor or major subdivision as defined in these regulations. They're asking us to delete. At the same time, the planning board shall make the determination of whether the approval of such a subdivision or lot-line adjustment may be, may have significant environmental impact. Uh, one sixty-four, B, two, A. If the sketch plan is classified as a lot-line adjustment, then the applicant shall comply with procedures outlined in section one sixty dash five. They're asking, requesting we delete and add the following. It said if the planning board shall make a determination, the planning board shall makes a determination that the subdivision qualifies as a major, as a minor or major subdivision. Asking us to delete, approval of such subdivision will have no significant environmental impact in that no improvements will be necessary for approval of such subdivision, then, then it, the subdivision shall be classified as a minor subdivision. And then they're asking us to remove C, otherwise the proposed subdivision should be classified as a major subdivision. I'll keep going. One sixty-four, B, three. If the sketch plan is classified as a minor subdivision, scratch the subdivider, the applicant shall then comply with the procedure outlined in sections one sixty-five, one sixty-six, and one sixty-nine of this chapter. One sixty-four, B, four. If it is classified as a major subdivision, the applicant shall then comply with the procedures as outlined in section one sixty dash seven, one sixty dash eight, and one sixty dash nine. One sixty-four, C, one sixty dash four, C. Sketch, study of the sketch plan. The planning board shall determine whether the sketch plan meets the purposes of these requirements and may make specific recommendations in writing to be incorporated by the applicant in the next sub, submission of the planning, to the planning board, either another of the sketch plan, lot-line adjustment, preliminary plat, or final plat. A pause.
We went back with, with the planning board and the town board still being able to approve a big subdivision or a major subdivision, right? That's what we did on that before.
Well, we submitted it for recriminations. Lou? Bob? Good. Alright, so one sixty dash four with improvements and deletions as suggested, just five yeses. Alright, one sixty dash five, approval of, scratching plat for, approval for lot line adjustment. A, application fee. Within six months after classification of the sketch plan as a lot line adjustment by the planning board, the applicant shall submit a lot line adjustment plat and the appropriate fee for approval. Failure to do so shall require re-submission of the sketch plan to the planning board for reclassification. The plat shall confirm, conform to the layout shown on the sketch plan as any recommendation made by the planning board. B, waiver conditions, scratching within six months. As to classification of the sketch plan as a lot line adjustment by the planning board, the planning board shall waive the requirements for the subdivision approval in accordance with subsection C of this section if the following conditions are met. There's, so B dash one, scratching out the top of it, the resultant lots meet or exceed the minimum zoning requirements as set forth in the town of Princeton zoning laws. Two, no additional lots, lot or lots shall be created. Three, the exchange or transfer of land between such adjoining lots will not preclude the future development of the lots in accordance with the setback and area requirements applicable to such lots pursuant to the town law, to the town of Princeton zoning law. Four, the exchange or transfer of land between such adjoining lots will not impede maintenance of existing or development of future access or utility services to the lots. Five, the exchange or transfer of land between such adjoining lots will not create or increase the degree of nonconformity of the lots, as that term is defined and intended to be applied pursuant to the town of Princeton zoning laws. And then add in six, the exchange or transfer of land between such adjoining lots will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, adversely impact the health, safety, and welfare of the town residents. B, applicant to attend planning board meetings.
We got A, B, then another B. We got a tight false B. Pardon me?
You got two Bs and another C.
Yeah.
Alright, so it's actually C. There's two Bs.
Yeah, so we made a C.
Yeah, second B is now on, two. So, the second B will be C, the C will be D, the D will be E, and on one sixty dot seven, E will be F. Alright. Um, this, alright. D, formerly known as C. Action on a lot line adjustment application. The planning board shall, within sixty-two days from the date of receipt of the sketch plan and lot line adjustment application, act to waive the remaining requirements of the land subdivision regulations contained herein and following the issuance of a negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, seeker, approve or conditionally approve the lot line adjustment request or deny the lot line adjustment request. The planning board issues a positive declaration or condition negative declaration pursuant to seeker or otherwise denies the lot line adjustment request, the applicant shall be reviewed by the planning board as a major, minor or major subdivision application in accordance with the remaining requirements of the land subdivision regulations. Failure of the planning board to act within such time shall constitute approval of the lot line adjustment request. E, formerly known as D. Signature of plat. The plat shall meet the conditions set forth in section one sixty dash one. Upon waiver of the remaining requirements of the land subdivision regulations and a grant of approval or conditional approval of the lot line adjustment request, the planning board chairperson shall sign a plat presented to them which complies with such conditions and requirements as may be stated in the planning board's resolution of approval or conditional approval. A copy of the planning board's resolution or approval or conditional approval and a certified plat, certified plat shall be filed in the office of the town clerk and provided to the applicant. Approval and, approval and conditional approval of the lot line adjustment shall, request shall expire a hundred days after the date of the resolution granting such approval or conditional approval unless the plat is certified before such time. The planning board may extend the time within which an approved or conditionally approved plat may be submitted for signature if in its opinion such extension is warranted under the circumstances. For additional periods of ninety days each, scratching no more than two. No approval shall be granted unless the town clerk provides written certification that all fees and reimbursable professional charges owed by the applicant are paid in full. Section F, formerly E. Filing of the plat within a hundred days after certification of the plat. By the chair of the planning board, the applicant shall file the plat with his connected county clerk. Alright, so we started on page one sixty dot five. The section is one sixty dash five, approval of lot line adjustment. So, section A, B, all subchapters or subparagras under B, C, D, E, and F, ending on page one sixty dash seven.
I think it's clearly stated and reasonable myself.
Okay, Doug? Lou? Bob?
Yes.
Alright, so... Five yes. Alright. Section one sixty dash six, approval of plat for minor subdivision. A, application and fee. One, within six months after classification of a, of the sketch plan as a minor subdivision by the planning board, the applicant shall submit a subdivision plat and appropriate fee for approval. Failure to do so shall require re-submission of the sketch plan to the planning board for reclassification. The plat shall conform to the layout shown on the sketch plan plus any recommendation made by the planning board. Said application shall also conform to the requirements listed in section one sixty dash fifteen A, one sixty dash six A two. All applications for plat approval for minor subdivision shall be accompanied by a fee set in the current consolidated fee schedule. In red, applicants shall be billed monthly for engineering, legal, and any other professional charges incurred by the town in association with the review of the application. One sixty dash six B, number of copies, scratch five, six hard copies and digital copy of the subdivision plat shall be presented to the clerk of the planning board, scratch town planner, at the time submission of the, at the, at the time submission of the subdivision plat. One sixty six, one sixty dash six C. Applicant to attend planning board meetings. The applicant or his duly authorized representative shall attend the planning, shall attend the meeting of the planning board to discuss the subdivision plat. When officially, uh, D, one sixty dash six D, when officially submitted, the time of submission of the subdivision plat shall be considered to be the date on which the application for the plat approval complete and accompanied by the required fee and all data required by section one sixty dash twenty of this chapter has been filed with the clerk of the planning board, formerly the town planner. One sixty dash six E. Public hearing. A public hearing shall be held by the planning board within sixty-two days from the time of submission of the subdivision plat for approval. Such hearings shall be advertised in a newspaper of general circulation in the town at least five days before such hearing. One sixty dash six F, action on subdivision plat. F, section one. The planning board shall, within sixty-two days from the date of the public hearing, act to conditionally approve, conditionally approve with modification, disapprove or grant final approval, and authorize the signing of the subdivision plat. This time may be extended by mutual consent of the applicant and the planning board. Failure of the planning board to act within such time shall constitute approval of the One sixty dash six F two. The planning board shall require the town engineer to review the subdivision plat, construction detail sheets, and confer with applicant and/or his engineer. The town engineer shall attend the public hearings and submit to the board in writing A, his recommendation as to approval or disapproval of the subdivision plat, B, his estimated fee to be paid by the applicant. The applicant shall be billed monthly by the town clerk for such fees. One sixty dash six F three. Upon granting conditional approval with or without modification to the plat, the planning board shall empower duly authorized officers to sign the plat upon compliance with such conditions and requirements as may be stated in its resolution for conditional approval. Within five business days of the resolution granting conditional approval, the plat shall be certified by the planning board chair. As conditionally approved, a copy shall be filed in his or her office and a certified copy mailed to the applicant. The copy mailed to the applicant shall be include a certified statement of such requirements, which, when completed, will authorize the signing of the conditionally approved plat. Upon completion of such requirements, the plat shall be signed by the duly designated officer of the planning board. Conditional approval of the plat shall expire a hundred and eighty days after the date of the resolution granting such approval unless requirements have been certified as completed within that time. The planning board shall extend the time within which a conditionally approved plat may be submitted for signature if in its opinion such extension is warranted in circumstances for additional, for additional periods of ninety days each. No approval shall be granted unless the town clerk provides written certification that all fees and reimbursable professional charges owed by the applicant are paid in full. So, looking at one sixty dash six, approval of plat for minor subdivision in its entirety, it's covered on pages one sixty dash seven and half of one sixty dash eight.
I think it's clear.
Alright. Doug? Mr. Lou? One sixty dash seven, approval of preliminary plat for major subdivision. Application and fee, section A, one. Within six months after classification of the sketch plan as a major subdivision, the applicant shall file an application for the approval of the preliminary plat, plat of the proposed subdivision. Such preliminary plat shall be clearly marked preliminary plat and shall be in the form described in section one sixty dash twenty-one hereof. The preliminary plat shall, in all, in all respects, comply with the requirements set forth in the provisions of sections two seven six and two seven seven of New York State Town Law and section one sixty dash twenty-one of this chapter, except for a waiver, except for a waiver is specifically, or specifically authorized by the planning board pursuant to article eight of this chapter. The application for approval on the section one sixty seven A two. The application for approval of a preliminary plat shall be accompanied by a fee set in the current consolidated fee schedule for the proposed subdivision. Applicants shall be billed monthly for engineering, legal, and any other professional charges incurred by the town in association with review of the application. It's gonna get hard, folks. One sixty dash seven B, number of copies, six hard copies and a digital copy of the preliminary plat shall be presented to the clerk of the planning board at the time of submission of the preliminary plat. One sixty dash seven C. Applicant to attend planning board meetings. The applicant or his duly authorized representative shall attend the meeting of the planning board to discuss the preliminary plat. One sixty dash seven, the study of the preliminary plat. The planning board shall study the practicality of the preliminary plat taken into consideration requirements of the community and the best use of land subdivided. Particular attention shall be given to the arrangement and location of streets, the relation to the topology of the land, soil conditions, water supply, sewer disposal, drainage, stormwater management, lot sizes and arrangement, and lot sizes and arrangement, the future development of adjoining lands as yet unsubdivided, and the requirements of the comprehensive plan in the official map and zoning regulations. One sixty dash seven E. When officially submitted, the time of, when officially submitted, submitted, the time of the submission of the preliminary plat shall be considered to be the date on which the application for approval of the preliminary plat, complete and accompanied by the required fee and all data required by section one sixty dash twenty-one of this chapter, has been filed with clerk of the planning board. One sixty seven, one sixty dash seven F, approval of the preliminary plat. One. Within sixty-two days after receipt of the preliminary plat by the clerk of the planning board, the planning board shall hold a public hearing, which, which hearing shall be advertised at least once in a newspaper of general circulation in the town at least five days before such hearing. before such hearing. The planning board shall provide that the hearing be further advertised in such manner as deemed most appropriate for full public consideration of such preliminary plat. Within sixty-two days after the date of such hearing, the planning board shall approve with or without modification or disapprove such preliminary plat, and the ground of a modification, if any, or the ground for disapproval of such, uh, shall be stated upon the records of the planning board. The time which the planning board must take action on such plat may be extended by mutual consent of the applicant and the planning board. When so approving a preliminary plat, the planning board shall state in writing modifications, if any, as deemed necessary for submission of the plat in final form. Within five business days of the approval of such preliminary plat, it shall be certified by the planning board chair as granted preliminary approval and a copy filed in his or her office, a certified copy mailed to the owner, and a copy forwarded to the town board. Failure of the planning board to act within sixty-two day period shall constitute approval of the preliminary plat. One sixty dash seven F two. The planning board shall require the town engineer to review the subdivision plat, construction detail sheets, and confer with applicant and/or his engineer. The town engineer shall attend the public hearings and submit to the board in writing, A, his recommendation as to approval or disapproval of the subdivision plat; B, his estimated fee to be paid by the applicant; and C, his estimate of performance bond or other security in, in a form required by the town board. The applicant shall be billed monthly by the town clerk for such fees. One sixty seven F three. In granting approval of the preliminary plat, the planning board shall state the terms of such approval, if any, with respect to, one, the modifications of the preliminary plat; two, the character and extent of the improvements for which waivers shall be requested and which, in its opinion, may be waived without jeopardy to the public health, safety, moral, and general welfare; three, the amount of improvement or amount, or the amount of all bonds therefore which will be required as a prerequisite to the approval of the subdivision plat. Approval of the preliminary plat shall not constitute approval of the subdivision plat, but rather shall be deemed an expression of approval of the design submitted on the preliminary plat as a guide to the preparation of the plat, which shall be submitted for approval of the planning board and for according upon fulfillment of the requirements of these regulations. Prior to the approval of the subdivision plat, the planning board may require additional changes as a result of further study of the subdivision in final form or as a result of new information obtained at public hearing. All right, one sixty dash seven, approval plat for major subdivisions. Doug?
Okay.
Joe?
Yeah.
Luke?
Yeah.
All right, so one sixty dash seven. Approval of preliminary plat for major subdivision, start on page one sixty dash eight. Thanks, Bob. One sixty dash nine, ending on one sixty dash ten, is approved. All right. One sixty dash eight, approval of final plat for a major subdivision, for a major subdivision. A, application for approval and C, the applicant shall, within six months of approval of preliminary plat, file with the planning board for approval of subdivision plat in final form. All applications for plat approval for major subdivisions shall be accompanied by a fee set in the current consolidated fee schedule. If the final plat is not submitted within six months after approval of the preliminary plat, the planning board may refuse to approve the final plat and require re-submission of the preliminary plat. One sixty dash A B. Number of copies. The applicant intended to submit a proposed final subdivision pat, plat, where the approval of the planning board shall provide the clerk of the board with a copy of the application and four copies, one copy in ink on mylar, of the plat, the original, and one true copy of all offers of session covenants and agreements, and two prints of all construction drawings. One sixty dash eight C. When officially submitted, when officially submitted, the time of submission of the final subdivision plat shall be considered to be the date on which the application for the approval of the subdivision plat, complete and accompanied by all data required by section one sixty dash twenty-two of this chapter, has been filed with the clerk of the planning board. One sixty dash eight D. Endorsement of state and county agencies. D one. Water and sewer facility proposals contained in the final subdivision plat shall be properly endorsed and approved by the New York State Department of Health or Environmental Conservation where applicable. Applications for approval of plans for water and sewer and water facilities shall be filed by the applicant with all necessary town, county, and state agencies. Where required endorsement and approval by the New York State Department of Health or Environmental Conservation shall be secured by the applicant before official subdivision, submission of the subdivision plat. One sixty eight D two. Where necessary, endorsement and approval of New York State Department of Environmental Conservation shall be obtained on stormwater management and development of wetlands or otherwise protected areas. One sixty eight, one sixty dash eight E. Public hearing. Within sixty-two days of the submission of the, of a plat in final form for approval, a hearing shall be held by the planning board. This hearing shall be advertised at least once in a newspaper of general circulation in the town at least five days before such hearing, provided however that, when the planning board deems the final plat to be in substantial agreement with the preliminary plat approved under section one sixty dash seven of this article and modified in accordance with requirements of such approval, if such preliminary plat has been approved with modification, the planning board may waive the requirement for such public hearing. One sixty dash eight F. Action on proposed subdivision plat. F one. The planning board shall, by resolution conditionally approved, conditionally, by resolution conditionally approved, conditionally approved with modification, disapprove, or grant final approval, and authorize the signing of such plat within sixty-two days received by the clerk of the planning board. By the clerk of the planning board, hearing is held. Within sixty-two days of the receipt, of its receipt by the clerk of the planning board, no hearing is held, or in the event a hearing is held within sixty-two days after the date of such hearing.
I think it should say, if no hearing is held.
Yeah, if no, it says.
That's us.
All right, oh, yeah, it's scratched. This time may be extended by mutual consent of the applicant and the planning board. Failure to take action on a final plat within the time described therefore shall be deemed approval of the plat. No approval shall be granted unless the town clerk provides written certification that all fees and reimbursable professional charges owed by the applicant are paid in full. One sixty dash eight F two. Upon resolution of conditional approval of such final plat, the planning board shall empower a duly authorized officer to sign the plat. Upon completion of such requirements, as may be stated in the resolution. Within five business days of such resolution, the plat shall be certified by the planning board chair as conditionally approved and a copy filed in his office and a certified copy mailed to the applicant. The copy mailed to the applicant shall include a certified statement of such requirements, which, when completed, will authorize the signing of a conditionally approved final plat. Upon completion of such requirements, the plat shall be signed by said duly authorized officer of the planning board. Conditional approval of a final plat shall expire one hundred and eighty days after the date of the resolution granting such approval unless requirements have been made, have been cert, unless the requirements have been certified as completed within that time. The planning board may, however, extend the time within which a conditional approval plat may be submitted for signature. If it's in, if in its opinion, such extension is warranted in the circumstances for additional periods of ninety days each. All right, that finishes one sixty dash eight. Approval of final plat for major subdivision. Doug? Joe? All right, we got five yeses on one sixty dash eight with the changes as suggested. One sixty dash nine, filing, filing of approved subdivision plat. One sixty dash nine A. Final approval and filing. First part scratched down. Upon completion of the requirements, this is here. Upon completion of the requirements in section one sixty dash seven and one sixty dash eight, notation to the effect, on the subdivision plat, it shall be deemed to have final approval and shall be properly signed by the duly authored, duly designated officer of the planning board and shall be filed by the applicant or owner in the office of the county clerk. The applicant or owner shall have disconnected county clerk stamp all signed copies of the final plat. The applicant or owner will file one mylar copy with the disconnected county clerk. The applicant or owner shall have disconnected county clerk stamp all signed copies of the final plat and shall return the stamped copies to the town clerk. Town clerk shall distribute the copies by filing one copy in the offices of the town hall. Should be probably one copy in the office of the plane, of the building inspector, and code enforcement officer, and one copy with the department of planning. The applicant or owner shall bear all fees in connection with the filing of the plat. One sixty dash nine B. Plat void if revised after approval. No changes, erasures, modifications, revisions shall be made in any subdivision plat after approval has been given by the planning board and endorsed in writing on the plat, unless the said plat is first re-submitted to the planning board and such board approves any modifications. In the event that any such subdivision plat is recorded without complying with this reg requirement, the same shall be considered and null and void, the same shall be considered null and void, and the board shall institute proceeds to have the plat stricken from the records of the county clerk. That's a scare, one sixty dash nine, filing of approved subdivision plat. Sounds good. Joe?
Yes, sir.
Luke? And Bob? Five yeses on one sixty dash nine. One sixty dash ten, streets and recreation areas. Public acceptance of streets. The approval of, the approval by the planning board of a subdivision plat shall not be deemed, constitute, or be evidence of any acceptance by the town of any street easement or other open space shown on subdivid, on such subdivision plat. Acceptance of street is solely at the discretion of the town board. That's one sixty dash ten B. Ownership and maintenance of recreation areas. When a park, playground, or other recreation shall be, recreation area shall be, shall have been shown on a plat, the approval of such plat shall not constitute acceptance, an acceptance by the town of such an area. The planning board should require the plat to be endorsed with the appropriation of subsequent facts, but signing board may, bless you. Planning board may also require the filing of a written agreement between the applicant and the town board covering future deed and title, dedication, and provision for the cost of grading, developing, equipment, and maintenance of such recreation area. That's one sixty dash ten, streets and recreation areas. Joe? Luke? Bob? That's five yeses on one sixty dash ten. Article four, general requirements. One sixty dash eleven, minimum standards. Considered applications for subdivision of land, the planning board shall be guided by the standard set forth here and after. The said standard shall be considered to be minimum requirement and shall be waived by the board only under circumstances set forth in article seven herein. One sixty twelve, general. A, character of land. Land shall be subdivided, land to be subdivided shall be of such character that it can be used safely for building purposes without danger to help or peril, fire, flood, other One sixty twelve B. Conformity, conformity to official map, comprehensive plan, and zoning law. Subdivision shall conform to the official map of the town and shall be in harmony with the comprehensive plan and zoning law. One sixty twelve, one sixty dash twelve C. Specifications for improvement. All improvements shall be constructed or installed to conform to the town specifications, which may be obtained by, from the town engineer. One sixty dash thirteen, lots. One sixty thirteen A. Lots to be available. The lot arrangement shall be such in, struck in a building in compliance with the zoning law. There will be no foreseeable difficulties for reasons of topography and other natural conditions. Lots should not be of such depth as to encourage the later creation of a second building lot at the rear, at the front or the rear. One sixty thirteen B. Corner lots. In general, corner lot should be larger than interior lot to provide for the proper building setback from each street and to provide a desirable building site. One sixty thirteen C. Driveway access. Driveway grades between the street and the setback line shall not exceed ten percent. Driveways should extend to proposed dwellings and shall be sufficient to accommodate emergency vehicles. Any stream crossing should be sufficient to handle the expected flow without causing flooding or erosion to neighboring properties. One sixteen, one sixty thirteen dash D. Access from private streets. Access from private street shall be deemed accepted only if such disease, streets are designed and approved in accordance with Prince Town Street and Highway Law. So, a pause there, one sixty eleven, one sixty twelve, and one sixty thirteen. Sorry, Doug?
I'm already, yeah.
Joe?
Clearly stated.
Luke?
No. I don't like the ten percent. We've got a lot of property in this town that are up in the mountains, up in the hills. The town, if it can only have a grade of ten percent, may limit people from building. You know, a lot of homes that are, have steep driveways.
It's just for the section between the street and the setback line, and that's because of fire vehicles, because they're so long. We were told by the fire warden that you can't have an angle, it's greater than ten percent, or else the thing bottoms out and goes into your driveway. So it's just for the section between the street and the setback line, which is typically fifty feet.
This was told by a fire warden?
That way, yeah, right.
That it has to be ten percent?
It can't be more than ten percent.
Can't be more than ten percent. So what do we do with all our properties if people want to build up in the hills?
It's just the section, when you go in, when you come in from the street, it can't be more than ten percent. Once you get in, it can be more than ten percent. It's just when the fire vehicle comes in, it'll hit the street if it's at a higher angle.
So once you get in, then it can go up higher?
Yeah.
Okay. All good? On one sixty eleven, one sixty twelve, and one sixty thirteen? Article five, special requirements and design standards for major subdivisions. One sixty fourteen, one sixty dash fourteen, improvements. A, street-lated improvements. Before the planning board grants final approval of the subdivision plat, the applicant shall follow the procedure set forth in the Princeton Street and Highway Law with respect to street design and construction. One forty, one sixty fourteen B. All improvements, before the planning board grants final approval of the subdivision plat, the applicant shall follow the procedure set forth in either subparagraph one or subparagraph two below. One sixty dash fourteen B one. In an amount set by the planning board, the applicant shall either file with the town clerk a certified check to cover the full cost of the improvements, or the applicant shall file with the town clerk a performance bond to cover the full cost of the improvements. Any such bond shall comply with the requirements of section two seventy-seven of the town law and further be satisfactory to the town board and town attorney as to form sufficiency, manner of execution, and surety. A period of one year or such other period as the planning board may deem may determine appropriate, not to exceed three years, shall be set forth in the bond within which improvements must be completed. One sixty dash fourteen B two. The applicant shall complete all improvements to the satisfaction of the town engineer, who shall file with the planning board a letter signifying the satisfaction, completion of all improvements required by the board. For any improvements not so completed, the applicant shall file with the town clerk a bond or certified check covering the cost of such improvements and the cost of satisfactory installing any improvement not approved by the town engineer. Any such bond shall be satisfactory to the town board and the town engineer as to form sufficiency, manner of execution, and surety. One forty, one sixty fourteen B three. The improvements shall not be considered to be completed until the installation of the improvements has been approved by the town engineer and a map satisfactory to the planning board has been submitted indicating the location of monuments marking all underground utilities as actually installed. If the applicant completes all required improvements according to subparagraph two, then said map shall be submitted prior to the endorsement of the plat to the appropriate planning board officer. However, if the applicant elects to provide a bond or certified check for all improvements as specified in subparagraph one, such bond shall not be released until such map is submitted. One sixty fourteen C. Modification of design improvements. If at any time before or during the construction of, of the improvement is demonstrated to the satisfaction of the town engineer that unforeseen conditions make it necessary or preferable to modify the location or design of such improvements, the town engineer may, upon approval of a previously delegated member of the planning board, authorize modifications provided, these modifications are within the spirit and intent of the planning board approval, and do not exceed to the waiver or substantial alteration of the function of any improvements required by the board. The town engineer shall issue any authorization under this section in writing itself and shall transmit a copy of such authorization to the planning board at the next regular meeting. One sixty fourteen D. Inspection of improvements. At least forty-eight hours prior to commencing the construction of improvements, the applicant shall notify the town engineer of the time when he proposes to commence construction of such improvements. The town engineer shall cause inspection to be, the town engineer shall cause inspection to be made to ensure all town specifications and requirements shall be met during the construction of improvements and shall assure the satisfactory completion of improvements and utilities required by the planning board. One sixty fourteen P. Proper installation of improvements. If the town engineer shall find upon inspection of the improvements before and before the expiration date of the performance bond that any of the improvements have not been construction in accordance with the plans and specification filed by the applicant, he shall so report to the planning board. The planning board then shall notify the applicant and, if necessary, the bonding company and take all necessary steps to preserve the town's rights under the bond. No plat shall be approved by the planning board as long as the applicant is in default on a previously approved plat. That was one sixty dash fourteen, starting on page one sixty dash thirteen and completing on one sixty fourteen. One question, though. On number one there, in the amount set by the planning board, where does the planning board get the amount? They get it from the engineer, or? I think it's in our consolidated fee schedule? Is that correct, Matt?
No, it's just for the improvements.
Oh, for the bond?
Yeah.
Yeah, how do you, how do they know what the bonds were?
Well, it would depend on what the improvement is and what the engineer says.
So, where'd you get the information from the engineer, and then that's how you make the bond?
Right.
You good? Joe?
Yes, sir.
Luke? And Bob?
I'm gonna have to leave, my two o'clock comes early.
All right, so, yeah, so it's five, you okay with?
Yep, I'm fine with it.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, um, so we start at section fifteen next time.
Yeah. I'm just gonna bring up one thing before we leave. What are we doing about our next meeting, that's on primary?
We had primary last week, or last year, we didn't find them today.
We're gonna still have a meeting on primary, okay.
I'll let, just, I'll, I'll make another meeting now.
Yeah, I just gotta remember the district.
All right, um, do I have motion to adjourn at nine o'clock?
Yeah, for our, I apologize to everybody on the board for being late.
They forgive you, that's some good talking. Yes, I make that motion.
All right, Doug second.
I'll second.
All right, yeah, Doug? Doug?
Yes.
Yes, Joe, yes.
Yes.
Luke, yes.
Yes, yes, pass.
Or, do you know where Heather?